Well, hopefully there's just one of me here.
Commissioner, there are two of you, but we can at least hear you now.
Okay, I'm having.
And it looks, it looks like your other personality was just removed from the screen. So your Siamese twin is now gone.
Okay, well then we'll start the meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning. Welcome to our Tuesday, May 17th Board of Commissioners meeting, and we'll start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair and running the meeting today and Commissioner Wise's absence.
Good morning, I'm Suzanne Ogero, Commissioner, and I'd like to acknowledge that Commissioner Wise is at a Western Interregional Meeting of the National Association of Counties and learning a lot about natural resource issues from colleagues all over the West up in Alaska. So she will come back to us with hopefully lots of good information and insight.
Good morning, Joe Kirby County Administrator.
Good morning. Oh, go ahead Vance.
Sorry Jeff, Vance Croney County Council.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Brian Lee, Emergency Manager.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department.
Good morning, April Holland, Health Department.
Lynn McKee, Director of Benton County Natural Areas, Parks and Events.
Morning Rick Craig, your Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, Mike Johnson, Public Works.
All right. That'll take care of introductions. Are there any announcements this morning?
Happy Election Day. May everyone vote.
By eight o'clock. All right, any other announcements? If not, it's time for comments from the public. Are there any public that want to comment at this time?
Yes, Commissioner, this is Mark Jaeger.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Do you, do you have, I'm taking a guess here, do you wish to comment on the discussion 6.2 discussion and decision to approve our order renewing the solid waste collection franchise agreement?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you could wait for that agenda item to come up and add your comments at that time.
Oh, well, my apologies, but the agenda didn't seem to have an opportunity for public comment once you got into the formal business meeting.
I think the general approach is comments from the public at first are general and don't refer to any specific item on our agenda.
Okay, so you're saying you will give me an opportunity to speak prior to the discussion of the item 6.2?
I'm not sure about prior to discussion, but prior to the decision.
Okay, well, I guess that I'll wait till then if that's the proper forum. It's a little confusing to me because it's not on the agenda and I don't want to bypass this opportunity for public comment if at that point County Council or others are going to say we've, we've had our public hearing on this and we're not going to have received any public comments at this time.
All right, I, I see County Council is on on the call here. Would you care to clarify Vance?
Sure, typically we, once we've gone through the public hearing, there, there isn't an opportunity for public input at the follow-up. So I think Mr. Jaeger's point about providing comment initially is in keeping with the way we typically have handled public comments in that because item 6.2 doesn't have a built-in opportunity for public input or comment, that public comment has been, has been provided prior to, I guess, the outset of the agenda items.
All right, I was given slightly different information. So you're saying this is the time for any public comment on any of our agenda items?
In this one in particular, yes, generally speaking, yes.
Okay.
Vance, just to interject, I am the one that provided Commissioner Malone guidance earlier today that if there was public comment, that that public comment was for, that section of the agenda was for items that were not actually on the agenda for that day. So that's typically how we operate and that the board has the prerogative to take public comment under specific agenda items.
That is absolutely right, absolutely right. I think the, the thing that makes 6.2 a bit more unusual is that there was a public hearing at which time public comment was taken. And typically when we bring back the order or ordinance, whatever was the result of that public hearing, there is not opportunity for public input or hearing or testimony simply because the, the time for consideration of the public input within the context of that topic was during the public hearing. Any other agenda items? I guess we have, you know, something on the agenda for weight limit. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that, you know, somebody wants to chime in at that, sure, because it hasn't been a prior. So I guess but bottom line is typically with a, with a topic having been preceded by a public hearing, we, we don't take public testimony in that topic to follow up.
So the, the board does, Mr. Jaeger, to his point, he would like to make comments. So is he able to make comments under public comment currently?
Yes.
Commissioner Malone, hopefully you heard that.
Okay. I am having technical difficulties here. I think with Vance's explanation, why don't you go ahead and, and make your comments referring to item number 6.2, renewing the solid waste collection franchise agreement. Go ahead, Mark.
All right, thank you Commissioners. I am in fact testifying on item 6.2 and I am testifying today to urge you not, do not renew this agreement for 10 years. I'd like to point out that the staff report did not have any discussion of the comments received during the public hearing on April 19th. I submitted the letter, other people had testimony and none of that was reflected in the staff report in response to both public and Commissioner discussion and request for a shorter term agreement. Those requests were put down by the County Council who stated that you were quote unquote handcuffed by your ordinance that requires a 10-year agreement. That's not true. Chapter 23.310 states that the board can have a shorter term agreement if it finds that it is in the public interest. And I submit that it is in the public interest to have a shorter term hauling and services agreement now so that future agreement can reflect the outcomes of the community engagement process on waste management in the county so that we can have the opportunity to coordinate and collaborate with the cities of Philomath and Corvallis during their renewal process. And it provides the opportunity for the county to revise Benton County Code, Chapter 23, to reflect the solid waste management needs of the county. There's a lot of controversy in our community right now about Republic's vision of solid waste management in our county. A shorter term agreement is in the public interest and should be done. Further, at the same hearing, County Council stated that the garbage hauling franchise agreement is not exclusive. That's also not true. In effect, the language, there's no language in the agreement that says it's exclusive, but Benton County Code, Chapter 23.210 only allows franchise applicants who already control and quote unquote a majority of the service accounts in the service area. So this franchise service can never have another service provider until Republic Services steps away because no one else can have a majority of the accounts in the service area. If you proceed as recommended by staff, the franchise agreement included on page 75 of your packet gives all the power to Republic Services. There is no language in that agreement that allows the county to modify the agreement without Republic's consent. So as structured, Republic Services can simply not agree to changes that are of interest to the county and its residents. For Republic, a 10-year hauling agreement now would make it more difficult for the county to change future service requirements and it effectively locks out other competitive service providers. For the county staff, simply renewing a 10-year agreement is easier to manage. However, doing the same thing over and over will not result in meaningful change to solid waste management in the county and it is not in the best interests of county residents. So I urge you again, do not renew this agreement for 10 years. Execute a shorter term agreement that expires at the end of 2023 to be in coordination with the cities of Corvallis and Philomath. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you on this matter.
All right, thank you. So are there any other comments from the public at this time? If not, we'll go on to item number three, review and approve the agenda. And the agenda that we're working with is revision number two that's at the top is in red because there have been a couple of changes. So we've added item 6.3 under Old Business, second reading of the Benton County Code, Chapter 17, sale of tobacco. That, that was inadvertently missed from the original agenda and we are eliminating item number 10. We don't have a need for executive session and I think those are the two, two changes. Are there any other revisions to the agenda? If not, we will. Do we need a motion to approve the revised agenda? No, okay, we'll move on to item number four, the work session COVID update from Department Operations Center Suzanne Hoffman and April Holland. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi Commissioners, Joe Vance and everyone else out there. I'm gonna be able to provide your COVID-19 update for, for today. So as, as I've been saying many times lately, our, our COVID-19 transmission is high right now in Benton County. Our last full week of data, the week starting May 8th, we had 286 cases in that seven-day period. That's a case rate of 302 per 100,000 reported and we know that that is an undercount. So we've got a lot of transmission happening right now. Our positivity rate was 9.3% that week indicating that more testing could be done to adequately determine burden and the, the testing need. And I want to put this into some context for everyone here. The, the CDC community levels has Benton County and, and some other counties in Oregon in the medium category. So the, the thresholds that would move Benton County according to, to the community levels into high would be a case rate that continues to be above 200 where we certainly are there plus one of the following additional criteria. We'd need to have new COVID-19 admissions per 100,000 be 10 or higher in the, in the last seven days. And right now we are at five. So we are halfway there. The other that could put us into the high category is the percentage of staffed beds in use by COVID-19 patients and that would need to be also 10% or higher. And right now that's, that's at 2%. So where we are closer is certainly the new COVID-19 admissions per 100,000. Benton County, you know, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that we, we did a dive into our testing rates. Benton County continues to test at a higher rate than most Oregon counties. And, you know, as, as it followed before, both our case rates and our testing rates are second only to Multnomah County. So I think, you know, based on the amount of testing that we're doing, it's, it's likely that there is widespread transmission occurring in areas that, that may have lower reported case rates right now. As for hospitalizations, hospitalizations are rising in the state and as has, you know, as was predicted by OHSU modeling and OHA. I looked at the last two weeks. So in the, across the state, the numbers of individuals hospitalized for COVID went from 168 to 251 in the last few weeks and that's about a, about a 50% increase. And in our region and Region 2, our hospitalizations increased from 20 to 32 in the same time period and that's about a 60% increase. And, and you know, when it, when it comes down to, we, we are seeing increased hospitalizations right now. I can't say for, for certain how long we'll have increased transmission. We have a lot of, we have new variants that continue to outperform their, their predecessors in terms of transmissibility. And, you know, it, it's, it's likely that that everyone will be exposed to the virus at some point. But, and this is a big caveat, not all need to ensure to result in infection or, or to risk passing infection along to someone who may have had a bad outcome. Or as I said, our case rate is over 300 per 100,000. We, we never saw that before the Omicron wave. And right now wearing masks indoors is becoming increasingly rare. My recommendation and communication to all is that if you want to avoid infection right now, please consider wearing an N95 or a KN95 indoors. And overall, if you want to reduce your risk, please, please be up to date with vaccination. Choose outdoor activities right now. It's getting really nice outside and well-ventilated spaces inside. We have a lot of rapid antigen testing available right now in the county. The, the costs have come down. We're starting to see more, more tests available out in the community, more opportunities for free testing. I'll talk more about that in a moment. But you can use these before gatherings, before meetings even. And I, and I, I want to touch on, you know, wearing, wearing a mask in indoor public settings is a good idea right now, but I don't want people to think it's all or nothing. Reducing your risk when it's higher, it matters and it counts for something too. And deciding to wear a mask when the risk is greater, such as in crowded settings when traveling, for example, is a great idea, even if you don't want to apply it universally. So I encourage people not to take an all or nothing approach. You know, certainly all is, is, is great if that's your choice, but it's okay to apply it in situations when the risk is higher, even if you don't do it all the time. It does count for something and reduce risk. So I want to let everybody know about a brand new round of the free rapid antigen testing through the, the, through the, the federal government. It's the third round of USPS testing. This, so twice previously, people could receive four tests at their home address. And this third round is now underway. It just, I just heard about it yesterday and this one delivers eight tests to a household. The website for that is special.usps.com/ testkits. So get those, use those and I'll have some information in the next few with about additional opportunities for tests as well. I have a few pieces of vaccine news that I want to share with you. We have, we've had several calls to our COVID-19 call center following a mailer that we sent out that many of you may have received yesterday or you will receive soon. This was about booster availability and places where people may find a vaccine in order to, to ensure that they're up to date with their vaccines. We're so glad to have distributed that flyer. Secondly, this morning, the FDA announced approval of a booster dose for children ages five to 11. We're, we need to wait for approvals to trickle through the system and for updates to be made to OHA vaccination protocols before we can begin administering boosters to this age group, but we anticipate to have that green light either late this week or next week. And then I know many, many families are eagerly awaiting vaccination approval, EUA approval of COVID vaccination for six months to five years. And those meetings are still scheduled. Three meetings across June, mid to late June right now. So we have seen that, that packages have been submitted and are really looking forward to and engaged in planning to, to ensure that we are ready to go for the littlest ones. And then just, just to let everyone know, we, we certainly have a lot of opportunities right now for, for, for vaccination and this late this weekend and to the weekend is one of those really busy weeks for community vaccination. So we'll be, we have two vaccination events on Saturday, one from 10 to 3 at the Corvallis Community Center. That was Saturday and another in Monroe from 1 to 5. We'll also be in Philomath at Clemens Primary School on Friday, the 20th from 4 to 7. And we have an event at the Boys and Girls Club of Corvallis, Sunday, the 22nd from 1 to 5. Those are just our community events. There are many, many more opportunities. People are welcome to call our call center or check our website for additional vaccine availabilities. I think that's all I have for you today. I appreciate the, the time and happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Any, any questions for April?
Just a note of gratitude for your report as usual and for the encouragement for all of us to to think about masking and use our judgment based on our own level of, of risk and vulnerability. If that's a good message at this point in time. Appreciate it.
I guess my question, and you may have covered it. I'm still having technical difficulties here this morning, but thinking ahead to this fall, what, what are the vaccine makers? I assume they're quite busy as we speak. And, and my impression is similar to flu trying to anticipate what's coming and then develop a vaccine to cover that. Is, is that a accurate picture of what's going on? And the, the vaccine that we get or have an opportunity to get this coming fall might be different than, slightly different than what's currently available?
Thanks, Commissioner. You know, I, I do think that's where we are headed. These are the activities you mentioned about development of variant-specific vaccines, similar to what we see annually with, with influenza vaccines. We're certainly hearing a lot about it. I, I don't know of any trials currently in motion to test vaccine efficacy or effectiveness of, of, of these vaccines. I know that there are also funding questions about how to widely distribute these. And, and forecasting, you know, does show a, a stark picture of, of many people, many, many infections. And as we had, as we learned with Omicron, a, a small percentage of hospitalizations, severe outcomes and, and deaths when you have a large overall number makes, makes for a large number. So it is, it is vital that we have tools and use them as, as we approach the, the fall and winter seasons.
Okay, thank you and, and really appreciate your efforts and your bi-monthly reports to keep us updated. Because I, I think it is important to reinforce the idea that we're, we're, we're not finished. This, this is something that's going to be with us and, and hopefully carry forward some of the hard-won lessons that, that we've learned so far. So thank you for that. Anything else on Health Department update? And, and just FYI, I have a choice of being able to see your smiling faces or, or get the packet, but I have not been able to do both. So Zan, I'm, I may need some help. I, I've got the agenda, so I can do that. But maybe after a break, I can something out here, but having a little trouble. In addition to a, a little note that my, my network connection isn't very good. So other than that, things are going great. Next up is the consent calendar of three weight limit postings. If there's no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I have no questions and I would have to move approval of the consent calendar.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to old business. 6.1, I see Vance has popped up and is going to talk about some, maybe it's a change in the second reading of the emergency procedures code. So take it away Vance.
Thanks, Commissioner. So two weeks ago, we held a public hearing to consider amending chapter 32 to add the fire ban. What we had anticipated was that sometime prior to holding the second reading of that ordinance, we would get input from ODF and various fire districts. We did have a meeting yesterday with ODF. Joe's name was Leo and for the life of me, I can't remember what his last name was. And Tom Miller from Flomis Rural Fire Protection District, as well as Brian Lee and Sheriff Van Arsdale. The ODF and Tom Miller and the sheriff all expressed some ideas and some reservations about how the ordinance and the language that we, and Leo Williams, thank you very much, Brian. Very well, very good, very timely. They expressed some reservations about the impact, the enforceability and the conflicting messages that people in the rural portions of Benton County might receive as a result of our proposed burn ban. So we talked about it and the recommendation from, from staff is that we hold off on conducting the second reading of the amendment to chapter 32 until after your work session next week. At your work session next week, ODF will present its, I guess its annual report to you, but we'll also fold in a discussion of the Benton County proposed fire ban and how it impacts the various agencies. We fully expect that discussion to have a great impact on our decision on how to move forward with a fire ban. It should be very informative. Following the meeting on the 24th, I, I, I think that the board will be asked to do one of two things. Either let the current proposal to amend chapter 32 die without a second reading and move forward with a completely different version of that burn ban that more closely integrates the concerns of fire district, the sheriff and ODF. Or to move forward with that as it currently stands. I suspect based on the reservations that ODFW, Flomis Fire District and the sheriff raised, we may end up simply letting the code, code language that we initially implemented die and come back with a better version sometime soon. So that's, I, I apologize, that's a fairly long-winded explanation for why staff is recommending we push to the 24th, our regular, at the end of that meeting, consideration of the second reading of chapter 32 amendment. At that time, you can decide whether you want to go forward with that second reading or whether you just want to let it die. But we do need to, because it is a second reading. If we're not going to conduct that today, we do need to set a date certain for the next consideration. So that's, that's the proposal. So just continue the second reading until the end of the agenda on May 24th.
Oh, I think we need a motion to that effect. I would propose that we continue to hold over until May 24th, the second reading on this matter of amending Benton County Code, chapter 32, emergency procedures.
I'll, I'll second that. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No, I, I, I think that was, that was as clear as it could be Vance.
I probably could have used a few, few fewer words, but yeah, hopefully it was clear.
Well, and, and it makes sense to get the people are on the front lines to make sure that what we're trying to do and, and our wording line up. So looking forward to more of a discussion. All right. Once again, I only have four people on my screen. Is that different from other people's screens?
That's all the active cameras.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Next up, item 6.2, discussion and decision to approve order number D 2022-044, renewing the solid waste collection franchise, franchise agreement. And I think Daniel, there he is, Daniel Reddick, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you so much for your time today. So this is a agenda item that is coming up after the public hearing that was held on April 19th, where the board directed staff to prepare a board order granting the franchise renewal with amended conditions to those that were in the staff recommendations. So staff prepared that drafted board order as well as a drafted franchise agreement, which is the written agreement required in chapter 23.
All right, Zan?
Yeah, I would like to speak to this matter. I, I am going to wax philosophical here for a moment. Right now, we're in a period of time when there's an incredible distrust of institutions, whether it's local government, higher level government corporations. And there's a high level of environmental concern, we're probably. We're making this decision in the context and backdrop of discussions about the future of, of Coppinfield landfill in general, also operated by Republic Services. And we have a real need for trust as we embark upon our Oregon consensus process so that we can indeed get to a common set of facts and make rational decisions about the landfill and solid waste management moving forward. So given all of that, I am a little bit a little, a little bit frustrated with exactly where we're heading. I'd like to proceed with the franchise for hauling with Republic Services. We need to have a hauler, but I would like to see a, a more firm date with respect to the end date of this franchise to give us the ability to modify it as we need to, rather than the full 10-year period. We have language here about syncing this franchise with that of Corvallis, the city of Corvallis hauling franchise. But it is not very specific and it's not, as I recall, in the order per se. It's in the findings in general and there's not a specific date certain. So it's pretty fuzzy to me. So that's one point. And then the second point is that I would really like us as a county to take a hard look at Benton County Code pertaining to solid waste, chapter 23, and the processes for hauling franchise. In light of the comment that community man, Mark Jager made earlier, that if you have to have a majority of the residences and already signed up for your service, it, it, it really does create a de facto monopoly for one hauler, even though we say that there could be multiple haulers. Or for instance, someone much more specialized in recycling that came into the county. That's theoretically possible, but it's not very realistic. So those are my concerns and I welcome discussion, a broader discussion.
Thank you. Vance, do you want to weigh in on this or to, to address Commissioner Ojero's concerns?
So I don't, I don't know how much I can weigh in on this. One thing, let me just chat about the chapter 23. Yeah, we, we can absolutely take a look at and do some revamping and updating of chapter 23. I don't recall the last time that was significantly updated. I don't believe it's been since, since I've been around. So clearly the, the processes and the expectations that under, underpin chapter 23 derived from the 1980s and 1990s, and things have changed. So revising chapter 23, I think is, that's, that's an easy thing. And obviously, as, as we all know, that's, that's not a, a fast process. And given what Commissioner Ojero has said, it, it probably shouldn't be a fast process. So that's, that's something that we, we can do. With regard to the date certain, the, about the franchise agreement, we have, we have said that we would like to dovetail with Corvallis's and the order is pretty clear that we will, it's, it's mandatory language in the order that we will reopen the franchise agreement to incorporate elements in the Corvallis franchise agreement that are not present in the Benton County agreement. And I know Corvallis's order, franchise agreement expires December 31st, 2023. So that would, that would put the re opener at, what is that? 19 months, no later than 19 months from now. I don't know if that's a certain enough date. We could certainly add into the order or the ordinance that it would be, for example, we will reopen the franchise agreement at the time Corvallis's franchise is negotiated or, you know, let's say, just say for the sake of discussion, July 1st, 2024, whichever is earlier. You know, that would, that would give you a window when this would occur. And I don't think that would be, I'm almost positive, Daniel, either nod or shake your head. I don't think that would be an issue for Republic. So that would give Commissioner Ojero, would give you at least something to put in pen on your calendar when this topic would arise again.
I would much prefer that.
So let me just go to the agreement.
It's 73 of the packet.
Yes. So I would suggest that where it says, well, Daniel, we may need to come back with another iteration of the franchise agreement that clearly states that, because I know we folded in the, the order as an element of the we may wish to simply pull that provision out of the order that is the re opener and add to it that language about July 20, July 1st, 2024, whichever it is earlier. That way it's very clear and the board can see it before it adopts the order. Does that, does that make sense?
It, it, it does to me Vance, especially that we're lacking one of our commissioners and I, I'm not real comfortable having language floating around. And I think I understand, but it's nice to see it written and, and have, have a little time to make sure that the, that we're, that our language meets our, meets our goals.
And, and, and I agree. I would say Commissioner Malone, probably in 95 times out of 100, you all can agree verbally on the language because it's, it's pretty straightforward. This one, we want to make sure that everybody sees it and you're comfortable with it.
And what, what, well, I, I guess we don't need to know now, but a timetable for getting timetable for getting back on this, back to this.
Daniel, I'm looking right at you.
I think if you wouldn't mind coming, us coming back to this topic in a couple of weeks for review, does that make sense?
Sounds good to me. And that, that gives you time to go over what we, what we've talked about here and and then get it to us. I had a board meeting in a couple of weeks. Let's see what we've got. There's a holiday in there somewhere.
June 2nd or something like that?
No. It is June.
June 8? 7th.
7th. Why don't we, does that sound reasonable, Daniel? Daniel, I guess it's three weeks, three weeks from now, June 7th.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
And then the final question is, does that, that language have to be in our order, or does it also have to be in the agreement? The draft agreement or the agreement we approve with the public?
What I'm going to suggest is that we put it directly into the agreement. And I'm going to recommend that we pull that, that re opener language that's in the order inserted in the agreement with the July 1st, 2024 date as well.
Then no later than, yeah, that sounds good. Do we need to make any formal decision today? No, no.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? Well, I appreciate the discussion and just for clarification, Republic is working, has been working since the first of the year without a hauler agreement. Is that correct?
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's correct.
But we need to get this right, so. All right. And this is the change to our agenda. We've added item 6.3, second reading of the Benton County Code, Chapter 17, sale of tobacco. And look at who's here. Good morning, Andy. Would you walk us through this?
Yes, thank you, commissioners, for squeezing us in. At the last meeting, we did introduce the updated code language for sale of tobacco, what is called the Tobacco Retail License Language. Today is just the second reading in that process. I don't have a full packet with the language in front of me, but I could certainly refer to it if there were any questions, the last packet, that is. One second thing I wanted to mention is that at the time of the last meeting, there was a question about a what the fee would be for an appeals, which is brought before the Board of Commissioners. For example, if a retailer wished to contest some type of civil penalty that was levied against them as a result of a tobacco sale to minor or something like that. We're in the process of reviewing other counties, our colleagues, what, what they have as far as a fee and a process, and that's still ongoing.
All right, are there any questions for Andy?
Just a clarification, so we won't be approving the fee for that appeal hearing at this time. We're just going to pick that up later.
Okay, yes, yes. Andy, Andy and I will, and Sarah will work together to bring back a new order that updates that, that element of the fee schedule.
Okay, well, I would be, Commissioner Malone, do you have questions? Otherwise, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I think we're ready for that.
Okay, I move to adopt order number D 2022-043 Increasing the Annual Tobacco Retail License Fee to $560 to Support the Administration. Implement what?
I think this is the second reading of 17, and you know what? I'm looking through the and I don't see it anywhere.
Okay, I will move to, sorry about that. I didn't pick up on that. I will move to approve the second reading of D 2022-043 Increasing
Ordinance number 2022-0310. Sorry. Sorry, it looks like, it looks like you have the order in front of you, and this is the ordinance that needs to be second reading, so. I'm, I'm sorry, this is confusing.
It's not, it's not correct on the packet. Okay, I will approve the ordinance. I will move to approve the ordinance implementing the increase in the fees in the tobacco retail license.
And hold the second reading.
And hold the second reading.
I know it.
And I will second the second for the second reading, so. All in favor, say aye. Right?
All right, let me do the second reading. For the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending chapter 17 of Benton County Code, ordinance number 2022-0310. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Benton County ordain as follows. Short title, this ordinance shall be known as Amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter 17. Okay, put that one behind us, and that will become effective 30 days from today, which would be June 16th.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time.
Thank you, and next up is new business discussion and decision to adopt our climate action plan. I think I will propose a five-minute break. Maybe I can get my technical difficulties back, so let's come back right at 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, well, welcome, welcome back, and we will now go into new business. Discussion and decision to adopt our climate action plan. We have Jen Brown and Sean McGuire. You two can fight it out for who starts. This is a follow-up on Sean's presentation from recent presentation, so take it away.
Great. Well, thank you, commissioners and staff for having us here today. Um, let's see, if I can be made presenter, that would be great. And I'm, before I get started, I just want to introduce Josh Proudfoot, who's here with us today. Josh is the principal at Good Company, and will be sharing the presentation with me. So I just wanted you to be able to see his face because he'll come and start talking partway through the presentation. And Good Company is a research and management consulting firm based in Eugene with over 20 years' experience working with governments, businesses, nonprofits, and other agencies to mount and measure impact of their work, and they have particular expertise in the field of climate action, which is why we began working with them over the past year. Good Company serves clients internationally throughout the US, and they have extensive expertise working with local governments in the Pacific Northwest, including cities of Corvallis, Eugene, Gresham, Hillsboro, Usgo, Milwaukee, Oak Ridge. I could keep going with a number of counties, but they really bring a lot to the table. So I'm really looking forward to them presenting today. You do have a probably 12-page memo. Josh is just going to touch on the highlights of that in today's presentation, but it is in your packet to read in detail. So let me begin, and okay, so as Commissioner Malone said, this is the follow-up, part two. Two weeks ago, Sean presented our greenhouse gas inventory and emissions, and today, the presentation, if I can get this going. Today's presentation is going to be in four parts. I'm first going to talk about our climate action plan. Then I will spend a little bit of time delving into the progress we made to date, and Josh will talk about the company's analysis and recommendations, and we'll end with staff recommendations and next steps. So our climate action plan is our, really our roadmap to our emissions goal. Just a reminder that our goal is internal. It implies to county government operations, not to all people actions in Benton County. That is just an image of our climate action plan that you saw there. You do have a full climate action plan in your packet. Over the past year, 2021, we did a update of our climate action plan. The first plan was developed initially in 2018. It was always meant to be iterative. And this past year, we started with an internal review sustainability program, first refining the language in the climate action plan. Then it went out to the Resource Efficiency Committee for review, and they took it to all departments who had opportunity to provide input. Good Company then came in and gave us some feedback on the plan, along with the impact analysis that we're going to hear later in the presentation. Then the sustainability program reviewed all the comments and developed an updated draft of the climate action plan. And those final updates are what you see in your packet for your consideration. So here we are in 2022, and what we're going to spend the bulk of this presentation on today, which is reviewing the climate action plan through the lens of what actions we've accomplished and what our priorities should be moving forward. So let me just do a quick review of the cap and how it's structured for each of the sources for which we track emissions, fleet fuel, employee commute, electricity and natural gas, water, waste, and purchasing. We have high level of We have high level objectives for each of those. You can also see up here that we've got our current 2020, 2020 emissions right here. And those are measured by calendar year. So you see that not fiscal year and then our, our benchmark year, which is 2010 is over here on the left. All of these are scaled into metric tons of carbon equivalent, carbon dioxide equivalent, which allows other greenhouse gases such as methane to be compared using a common metric. For each source area, we list both the 2010 and the 2021 emissions. But it's important to note that what we don't list here is a goal for each source. So for example, you don't see a 50% target for fleet commute or waste. This is because our goal is to overall reduce our county emissions by 50% of 2010 levels by 2030 and be net zero by 2050. And we know that we have the ability to make more progress and impact in some, on some objectives and in others. So it's not 50% for each thing. We also have in our climate action plan, we have multi-source strategies. And those are strategies that will impact more than one of these above. So it might be something that does both fleet fuel and water and waste, things like that. And we have a section on carbon supplementation. Under each objective, this you'll, there is a set of strategies. And so this is an example or detail just of what's under electricity and natural gas. And if you expanded out a column to the right, you'd be able to see there's a list of potential actions and next steps. And you guys can all see that in your packet. So I want to stop here just for a second and see if there's any questions on the cap and how it's organized. Okay, so let's look at, yeah.
You say, you say that we should be able to see the third column here?
In your packet, in the climate action plan, you'll see the next steps and you should be able to see the next steps and potential actions.
Okay. Yes.
You don't, you won't see it on the slide because if I put it on the slide, everyone would have to lean so far into the print. But you should see that in the climate action plan that went in the packet. Okay, other question? All right. So let's look at progress on our objectives. First, we have the area of fleet fuel and we have two primary objectives there. We've got reduce our miles driven and reduce emissions from fleet and fuel. So what you see up here is in 2019, we started with a fleet management software called Faster, also in in 2019, we had a fledgling, some departments were using go-to meeting, but starting with the implementation of COVID in 2020, countywide use of go-to meeting really soared, as did we had an emergency telework policy. We fleet services also began a preventative maintenance and fleet replacement programs. And those meant that our fleet was really at its most efficient, was running at its most efficient. And fleet services developed a policy and guidelines, they drafted a policy and guidelines. We've been using R99 diesel fuel, which is renewable diesel. And by 2020, we had six hybrids. And so the reason I'm showing you our past accomplishments prior to 2021 is because these actions continue to reduce our emissions and carbon footprint. Even as we move into 2021, they're still working in the background. So in 2021, we began with, we drafted an official telework policy and that's going to move through in 2022 through a policy oversight committee. Financial Services is working to be able to capture mileage from personal vehicle use for, for work. Not just everybody's mileage on their car, but really when a director, a staff member, commissioner uses a personal vehicle for a work purpose, capturing that. So we're getting a whole picture of our fleet use. Assessment Department is beginning to start, they're starting in 2022 and through out 2023, begin doing some property assessments virtually. So you'll see as we move forward through these successes that in the dark blue will become the current year and our future ones will be in this lighter blue, the ones that are planned. So in reducing emissions from fleet and fuel, we added two hybrids in 2021. So we have a total of eight hybrids in fleet. Departments like Natural Area and Parks prioritize the use of their most fuel efficient vehicle first for their highest mile drives. So they're using their sedan over their pickup for, for things they would have not thought about previously. And we do have our first electric pickup truck on order that should come in in 2022. All right, so for employee commute. You remember when we came to you last year in this presentation, we had completed our first annual employee commute survey and that had given us a baseline pre-COVID employee commute. We did another, our second employee commute survey this year. And we had last year, I'm sorry, we had an emergency telework policy in place as a response to COVID. And as a response to commissioners prioritizing climate as one of your priority areas, departments started to make climate goals. So assessment had specifically commute, employee commute drive reduction goal. So that's what was prior. In 2021, we added emissions from employee commute to our annual tracking inventory. So Sean reported on that May 3rd, and you really saw the impact of that on our greenhouse gas emissions. Again, our telework policy, we're, we now have an official one drafted. That's going to dramatically affect employee commute. And because of that, more departments are really poised to have department climate goals. As, as you heard on May 3rd, Joe directed me to meet with directors and share their department employee statistics. So directors now have more information than ever before and are more able to make goals. They have information on impacted telework in their departments, on working for TENS and on their fleet use. All right, so in the area of energy, our two objectives were reduce energy consumption, our reduce energy consumption and transitioning to renewable energy. What you see here is over the last three years, all of the work and upgrades, really not all of it, but a chunk of the work and upgrades of facilities. So upgrading our, our lighting across buildings to LED, updating control systems, replacing old HVAC systems and a roof replacement on the LED. And again, these are prior to 2021. And at that point, as of the end of 2020, we had 25% of our electricity was being supplied by Blue Sky. And we had three buildings that had solar arrays, so 203 kilowatts of solar on our county buildings. By the end of 2021, Facilities was still upgrading across the board. So in the dark blue here, 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 this is all 2021 upgrades throughout here. And then you can see 2022 planned things are here. These, in this other efficiencies area that got, that added in. What happened in natural areas and parks is that they chose not to rent out Bazzell in the winter, the facility of the facility there because it's a really inefficient heating system. So right now they're in the process of looking for a more efficient system, but it doesn't make sense to be heating that facility in the winter. They actually can't pay for it. They're also adding a, they're doing an energy efficient upgrade to the restroom. We continued in 2021 to have 25% of our electricity supplied by Blue Sky. That's 25% of all electricity across the board for the county. And we added LED on the law enforcement building on with another 112 kilowatts of solar. Enough for locations have solar. You can see those for here in this slide. The LED really won't come on until our 2022 emissions inventory, because it just went live in February. And then this year, 2022, we're scheduled to have the Lincoln Clinic have solar panels. So we'll be seeing them start to show up next year. Okay, so in the area of reducing landfill waste and purchasing, we have a lot of actions that are going on that are sort of systemic processes across the county. And you can see those all listed here from our surplus and reuse being online and really being the go-to when you first need a piece of furniture or an office item to water bottle filling stations and battery recycling and all of those things. In terms of looking at our upstream impacts from purchasing for the past almost two years, a subcommittee of our Resource Efficiency Committee has been meeting a sustainable purchasing subcommittee, really discussing how to, what kind of practices we needed at the county that could really help us with our purchasing, reduce the impacts going into 2021. So these sort of system wide processes that got developed over the last few years are now just plot to sort of in place at Kalapua, our newest building. Other things that got added on, really the furniture use at Kalapua was enormous. Not only did it reduce our expenses by, it sort of saved the county $400,000. It reduced tons of landfill waste going, happening from our takeover of that building. We had a grant for a dishwasher at the fairgrounds as well as durable dishes. So that means when they have events starting back up, there's the option to actually not have paper and single use utensils and dishes and everything, and they can use the fairgrounds for that. At Kalapua, we're going to have a dishwasher, so that'll be equal for staff functions like retirement parties or other staff functions we have, will be have the ability to wash dishes. A number of departments are implementing specific, reducing paper use. So we saw that we're seeing that HR with paperless hiring and assessment with e-filing and records and elections this year will start reducing one of the envelopes they have to send out. And then at one of our parks, we're adding recycling services that we haven't been able to have before. And a really big thing that's going to start happening is financial services and the sustainability program are going to be working with all of the departments that are moving into Kalapua to start piloting some centralized purchasing and infusing some of the practices that are coming out of the Sustainable Purchasing Subcommittee into the way we purchase accounts from Kalapua as a pilot for how we do that across the county. In the multi-source area, we've had a number of materials that really came out of the Resource Efficiency Committee and the Sustainability Program over the past few years. So a sustainable meeting and event guide and a whole raft of information that is on the be. And then, as I mentioned on May 3rd, we have a climate action plan checklist for departments. And this really came out of the work of the Resource Efficiency Committee so that we can build a culture of sustainability across departments. And what's in this checklist, it really tracks with the climate action plan and the emission sources. But it's really specific things that at the department and staff level can be, can be and should be implemented. And there, everything from pieces coming out of policy to just actions, to reminders to go to the surplus and reuse first. But it's really a checklist so that all of those things are happening across the board to build that culture of sustainability. There's really a lot of stuff that we can be celebrating in the county. But before I move on, I just want to stop and see if there's any questions on any aspects of the progress we've been making so far. Okay. So, not on the Yeah.
I, I did have, have a question. I really liked the developing the checklist for each department. I think it's really important that everybody, you know, every department buy into the, to this effort and, you know, look, look forward to, I guess, seeing some of those checklists in action and I, I, it seems like we're on the right track here, but making sure that that these concepts are in the, in the front of our actions and minds and not, not kind of afterthought, so. Really like that, that part of being, being able to get really specific on, on what we should be doing or, or not doing. And so just, I like the specific checklist idea that every, everybody's involved, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? I can't actually see you, so if you have something, shout out or Sean's going to help me with, if he can see you just to say that there's a question. Okay, so as I said, those are all the great things we're doing and there's a lot going on in the county. But really the not such great news is it's not quite enough. So our, as you saw on May 3rd, our here's a track of our emissions since 2010. This was, here's where we are right now, 3,142 metric tons of carbon equivalent, our emissions. This was us in COVID and we can see that as we're coming out of COVID, we're starting, you know, coming back to the office. Our missions are slowly starting to go up. But our goal remains steady at 50% of this 2010 level. So our goal of 1,661 tons, we're really not there. And if you look from our 2021 emissions and our mission school, we have a gap right here of 1,481 tons. So that's really what we need to get at. And so we need a more targeted aggressive action is really going to be needed on, on our part. So as we said, we, we've been working with Good Company over this past year. And not only did they review our climate action plan, but they analyzed actions for impact. So we can determine where to best focus our resources. And what we did was ask Good Company to evaluate actions based on scale, cost, biggest thing for the buck and speed. So with that, I want to turn it over to Josh Proudfoot. You there, Josh?
Yeah, I'm here. Can everybody hear me? Yes?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Good morning, commissioners and everybody else. I hope you're getting a little bit of the sunshine we're getting down here in the south end of the valley. Just a reminder, here are the big bars of your emissions. And notice they're in the places we've heard about before. And where you see those, those diagonal hash marks, you see some of the mitigation showing up already. The next couple of slides are pretty exciting. I think there's a lot of potential there. So this, with this in mind, let's see how far we can go. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm going to take a little bit of time with this table because this is probably the most significant thing we'll look at in this next set of slides. So the point of this table is to show you how much can each action bring you in reductions? And how much would that cost on a life cycle basis from the metric of a ton of, a metric ton of greenhouse gases? So in the top left column, you've got action group and that's facilities and fleet. We're focusing on the two biggies here. Action description, those are the eight specific things we analyzed. Marginal capital cost, which means how much more than what you're doing already? And that's upfront cost. Then the next column, marginal operating cost or savings. That means how much more would you have to spend or how much less would you spend per year? Annual greenhouse gas reductions, so metric tons of CO2, which means all greenhouse gases. And that's how much reduction in one year. It's not life cycle. It's just one year. And then cost effectiveness, the life cycle cost per metric ton. So when you spread out the front cost and the operating costs or the savings all the way across, what does it come out to be? And then last but not least, timing of implementation, what's possible? How much might you, how long may you need to wait? So let's go through these facilities, LED lighting upgrade, sunset building. So let's go through these facilities, LED lighting upgrades, sunset building. Okay, so a $32,000 investment. I would start saving you $4,300 a year. And that would reduce the metric tons of CO2 by 33 per year. And on average, to do that, you're saving money to reduce carbon emissions and have better lighting. Own solar PV system, Avery complex. Okay, I want to point something out here. The incentives that Pacific Core is offering right now are through the roof. I don't know if there are other places where you could put more solar, but these incentives are as aggressive as any I've ever seen. So I just want to point that out and I think that's because their grid. Is not very clean compared to other utilities and I think they're trying to acquire it. So notice that the savings from that solar complex would start at $15,000 a year. And would reduce your emissions by another 103 metric tons. And on net, that's just saving you money, but that's because they're such incredible incentives. I would just encourage. The county to look at as much of that as possible while those incentives are in place. Renewable electricity purchases, so marginal capital cost. So what's the story here? No increase in equipment or anything like that. You're literally just changing what you're buying. And it still shows up and you flip the switch and the lights go on. So how much more per year is that? Well, that's about 12,000 bucks a year, but it also reduces. Renewable natural gas or offsets, again, no equipment change outs. What you're asking for from Northwest Natural is we want the renewable gas if you have it. And then if you don't buy offsets, this is what we do at our office building for the gas units we have and at home. So that that gas comes in carbon neutral. If you buy it through the utility, it's $20 a metric ton, but you could buy offsets. In another place for a lot less like Bonneville Environmental Foundation. As low as $4 a metric ton, but in bulk it might be cheaper. So again, there's another big reduction there, 269 metric tons annually. So fleet is really exciting. Things are really starting to open up in the fleet world right now. 100% renewable diesel or R99. That used to be hard to get. Now there's production in both Oregon and California that's exceeding the supply. Or the demand, sorry. And they're selling it at no additional cost over conventional diesel prices. Because the incentives and the carbon credits are so huge to the producers and the distributors. That that's where they're taking their profit. So no increase in cost capital or otherwise.
Will now be recorded.
Sorry. So, so just by switching this fuel, which is already underway, you could reduce 178 metric tons per year. And operators of diesel equipment almost always comment that it runs better on renewable diesel. What's exciting here is this buys you time with your existing equipment to wait for the technology to mature. So those special cases like off-road heavy equipment. Can get a different fuel type or a zero emission pathway, likely hydrogen or batteries. But you don't have to be an early adopter there. You can stick with renewable diesel. You have your emissions way down. And you can take your time and adopt that fleet as needed. Ditto with the renewable propane, it's a byproduct of making renewable diesel. So for the propane vehicles that I think you have in the sheriff's department. You can again use those for a long time, have a big reduction in emissions and at no additional cost. So we're in a new era here and, and just by making some procurements, which is you can really make a big difference. Okay, so now fleet electrification. So this one's strange. There's a high capital cost here. And what we did is we use some existing numbers here, but I tell you if. You could actually do better than the numbers that are here. So we use the Department of Administrative Services numbers and we, we object to a little bit of it, but some of it is useful for. Being conservative. So in their model, they assume one fast charger for every single vehicle that there is. Now that's probably not necessary. You could probably rotate vehicles or build a stand and have four vehicles to withstand. All around it and move the plug as you go. But they assumed that and they assumed a lot of difficulty in getting that power to the parking space. And they assumed that they'd also have to change the equipment in the fleet shop. Although the repairs go down dramatically, you still need different equipment. So they put a price premium on every single sedan of $35,000. So that's what we did here. I think that's overstated. It is a big. Kind of being very careful on it. Marginal capital or marginal operating cost, okay? If you're driving these vehicles 9,000 miles or more a year, you start saving money like crazy. If you're not driving them and they're sitting there, it's a very expensive vehicle to have. I know you have a great fleet person who went through a lot of this at City of Eugene and gets it. If you have high utilization on your vehicles, you save and I'll, I'll give you an example. Bass has high utilization on their EV sedans. And they are saying it's somewhere between nine and 13 cents a mile. ODOT has some EV sedans that are driven just a couple hundred miles a year. They're saying each mile is 97 cents when a traditional mile is about 19 cents per gallon. Right? In total cost of ownership. So if you use it a lot, it saves you a ton of money. If you don't use it, it saves you nothing and it's a waste of money. So the reductions are substantial, 330 metric tons. And if you're using those vehicles a lot, you're saving money and it ends up being a net negative. Telework policy, okay. This one is a dramatic shift. The annual greenhouse gas reductions are bigger than even the fleet electrification for the high use vehicles. And it's one of the things that we, we do a lot of transportation work. And the COVID shift to online work and online meetings as we're experiencing now. Is the single largest reduction in emissions and VMT nationally that we've seen in decades. It caught everybody by surprise and it proves something that has been hotly debated forever. So this is one of these things that I hope you can seize the moment and embrace the shift. Because it does make a big difference on emissions. Now, one other thing I want to tell you that's not in this analysis that will make the EV thing look even better. Is if as a fleet owner, you engage DEQ in their clean fuel program. They will front much of the capital cost for the charging in the vehicles. Provided that you guarantee you'll sell their credits to their program. So that's not calculated in here and that could dramatically bring your costs down. And again, you use those vehicles, you use all the incentives, you will come out dramatically ahead on costs. And those cost savings could easily be rolled over into the incremental cost increase. On the electricity on the gas. Okay, next slide. I see multiple arrow cursors there. Okay. So this is a cleaned up version of what we just looked at and you can see the big negative bars. And which ones have the biggest potential given the parameters that we studied. The, the fleet electrification as that rolls out, as that happens, as the vehicles are available, that'll be large too. But right away you see renewable electricity, biggest difference. And that's the $7 a metric ton or about 11 and a half thousand dollars a year. The solar, big savings, big difference. Again, if you can get more solar on site, you're doing great. It's gonna save you money well into the future and even though people say it's a 20 year life on those panels. If your roof is not a problem beneath it, those panels can keep running for 50 years. The LED upgrades, notice those are cost effective but not huge. The natural gas makes a big difference. The R99 has already started making a difference and could go a lot further. Ditto with the renewable propane and the telework policy and fleet electrification make a big difference too. So what does this mean in aggregate? Next slide, please. Okay, so again, here's where we are now with some changes already for the mitigation actions. On electricity and fleet fuel. Now let's see where we can be. All right, I don't know too many counties that have this opportunity to get their emissions so low for so little money. What I'd say is the fleet fuel, the natural gas, the building electricity and the commuting. Are your big opportunities for very low cost and it gives you breathing room to take your time. With the heavy duty fleet conversion, although at least the medium duties are, are showing up now. And then also there may be a limit to how much commuting emissions you can actually reduce ultimately until everybody's driving EVs. So this takes you so far for so little money and what I would recommend is that you do everything that's on this list. Just because it puts you in such a good position. And again, that solar, keep pursuing that. You know, once you're producing that energy on site and storage starts coming down in price. You can start having some resilience built into all those facilities. So. I think this is the last slide I'm speaking to. But I, I want to say you're in a very good position and with very little budget or effort, you can have a big impact. That's, that's my conclusion. Thank you, everybody.
Do folks have questions for Josh?
I have a question. And I, just because it went by fast, I did not fully understand the comment that you made, Josh, about the. DEQ clean bill program and they, they will front costs of some nature. Only if we do something and I just missed it.
Let me, let me explain. It's a fabulous program. So what DEQ was hearing is, hey, we've got these public fleet managers. That are having a hard time getting over the capital cost of the charging. And there's this weird kind of like, whose responsibility is that? Is that facilities or fleet, right? Cause it's at buildings, it has to be attached to the electrical system. But it's really about the vehicles and the vehicles are kind of, and their import and how you manage those changes a little bit. So what DEQ created was a program where. You sign up, you sign your fleet on and you contribute the credits you're generating from using EVs and renewable diesel. And they put those up for sale for the fuel distributors that can't meet the compliance threshold. And what they do is they give you the money that they would be buying those credits from you for upfront. So you can capitalize the equipment. And again, some of that is, is so hyper specific to the vehicles you pick, the chargers you pick, the locations. That we couldn't really do that analysis within the scope. But what it does is it, it shaves down that cost dramatically. And again, we use the DAS numbers. We think they're overstated. We don't know too many folks that have a lot of EVs that only have one charger per EV. Especially with a quick, quick charge, that's four hours per charge, right? So you can at least get three, three turns in there during the, the working hours. And then, you know, overnight you can have something charging. So, so that's, that's it in a nutshell, but DEQ is there to also serve public fleets and that's how they do it. Any other questions?
Yeah. Speaking of charging stations, we, I see Paul is on. On the call here and there was talk of originally of having charging stations at Kalapuya. I think that got delayed, but with this information, can we get that? And not just Kalapuya, but that's one that comes to mind is. Is the, Josh, is the DEQ program that you're talking about up and running?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
It is. And, and what's, it's just, it's just a fabulous program because it deals with some of those costs that really get in the way, right? I mean, those charging stations, some of those can go in easy and some of them it's such a pain because you gotta trench through the parking lot to. Lay the conduit and all of that. So that's, that's why I think that program's so fantastic. But again, you know, four hour charging on a fast charger gives you a lot of opportunity to get to multiple vehicles. And if you, if you're just doing trickle charge, which is not the goal, but overnight you can get at least 80 miles. That's, I mean, that's what we do at home. We've got a, a used leaf. It's really a 120 outlet that it's plugged into and it's fine. Every, every thing, if we charge overnight, it's great for the whole day.
That makes a lot of sense and I think that part of what we need though and for all of those decisions about electric vehicles, electrification of fleet is. More study of where it makes the most sense to put those chargers or it'll get the most use in which vehicles. Will, will save us the most money. As you mentioned, the, the ones that get driven the most miles. So I think there's a bit of analysis that needs doing. I have a similar experience. We have a 220 volt charging station and we can charge up to top off. Our vehicle very easily and have enough juice to make it almost to Seattle.
Well, and one of the things that's great here, but it has to be figured out is, okay, electricity is a lot cheaper even when it's renewable than. Electricity is a lot cheaper, even when it's renewable than, than gases as fuel, right? So, so two things happen there. One is you get a more predictable cost structure. Because electricity just doesn't have the variability in cost unless they charge you a um. A surcharge for that kind of uh, power at that facility. So that's something you'd have to look at. But generally speaking. Uh, if you're, if you're charging, you're saving money, but the cost and the, the, you have to, you have to put meters there to assign it to the fleet department. Otherwise, all of a sudden, the buildings charges go way up and fleets charges go way down. But what's nice is just the fuel prices are more volatile than the electricity. So your budget is a lot more predictable and it will be lower over time. But again, don't force the transition early with a vehicle class that's not ready. It's just not worth it. Um, and you've got options with your propane and with the renewable diesel to hang on to the vehicles that work. Uh, until there's something else that's there. So again, I think you're in a great position. Um, and D E Q will do a lot of help, uh, will do a lot to help you. Um, and this stuff is figure outable. It's just on the front end. It's a little messy when you first get going. But once the pattern gets going, then it's a lot quicker.
Um, a couple of things, Josh. You, you mentioned propane and my understanding is the. Uh, law enforcement no longer has propane fueled um, vehicles. So uh. Just FYI.
Okay. The, the. Well, then you don't have to worry about that one. Let's start gas. It's actually selling renewable propane in case anybody wants to barbecue renewable style.
And the other thing that caught my attention is the lifespan of the solar panels. And uh, that doesn't matter uh, what era of solar panels that you're talking about. I, I, I think on uh, at the fairgrounds, we have uh. Uh, solar panels on the cleverly named solar building uh, that uh. Have been in place for about uh, 11 or 12 years.
So solar panels degrade about 1% per year in their productivity. So, um, so they'll keep pumping away some energy. It's just, it degrades over time. So the question is, you know, in 50 years. Is generating half the power for that surface area worth it or not? And usually that becomes more a question of what's below it than what's in the panels. But I, I, I mean, I know, I know some of the solar installers talk about having stuff from, you know, the seventies that. And the eighties that are still working for them. But, but again, it's all about what's underneath it. If you have it up on stands above grass. Uh, you know, then you could uh, just keep rolling with that until they're completely dead. If it's on a roof, you gotta consider that. But if you have a membrane roof, let's say, that has, you know, a lifespan of 25 years. And you shade it the entire time, the U V breakdown doesn't happen. So a membrane roof can stay underneath solar panels way longer. Than other roofs and maybe a metal roof too. You know, that's a 50 year roof. So it's that kind of thinking that you want to do, like just make sure that the rest of the system doesn't force the, the age out of it.
Great. It's uh, really helpful to get some of these specifics, like uh, on electric vehicles. If you're driving 9,000 miles a year or more, you're in really good shape and, and just those kind of. Going from uh, the, the theory, well, electric cars are, are good. Well, uh, the uh. They're only good if you, you use them enough. And, and. So get, getting some of that real world experience built into our, our planning is really helpful.
One of the, one of the things that we've seen that, that helps is making that the, you, you, that must be your first vehicle. Like if it's available, you take that one in that category. Um, unless the, unless the trip is too long. But if you look at the Ford F-150 that's coming, that's being delivered this year. And you start looking at the um, the Chevy Silverado. So we're talking pickup trucks, right? When we're really getting into doing regular work. The Silverado is tested by car and driver did 350 miles while towing a boat. So that we're starting to get into the really useful territory there, right? Your county's large, but how many 350 mile trips in one day do you make? So that's what's exciting to me, but that's just starting to arrive. It's the light duty vehicles that are kind of figured out. Although we'll see a lot more of them. It's the SUVs and the pickup trucks that I think break it wide open. And that's what's exciting that's arriving. And I'd say just be patient. Don't buy them prematurely. Make sure you get good ones. Cause people are gonna love them if they work, right? Just, just the only thing is you gotta stop the drag racing because those trucks can often go zero to 60 in like three or four seconds. So you'll have to, you'll have to have some rules about no late night drag racing. Any other questions?
No, I really appreciate the analysis. It's fantastic to have numbers on, and I guess one last question. You said that the fleet electrification numbers that, and the underlying calculations that come from DAS are conservative. Um, where do most of the other um, assumptions come from? And are there other implicit assumptions that we should be aware of?
Yeah. So, so really it's about cost, right? And, and that's the big variable. And then it's incentives. So the costs, uh, we took the DAS cost to take the most conservative scenario of difficult to install charger. Dedicated charger, one vehicle, one charger. We did that on purpose. Uh, if we wanted to use a traditional number, it's usually 10,000 bucks. But we've seen differences, right? Sometimes it's really easy and it's like less than five or two or three. And then we've seen ones that are 15 or 17 just because of site conditions. So that's one of those uh, things where we don't, we always want to be conservative on the estimation. But really it's site specific. And when you start looking at the layout of the parking lot and what it would cost in trenching and where all the stations go. Then you can start getting a real handle on those costs.
I was just wondering uh, whether there are any other embedded assumptions for some of the other savings that we might want to consider. And obviously um, something like renewable diesel might not be as inexpensive. Um, five years from now or 10 years from now, we don't know. Um, it depends on carbon markets, it sounds like, or um, the costs of um. Uh, some of the other options are, are there embedded assumptions we should be aware of over the lifetime of some of these other investments?
No, I think the LED lights are pretty, pretty safe when they're very well known. Those numbers are coming from Energy Trust Oregon. Um, uh, that doesn't get you super far, right? But, but the one other thing that I'd say is when you're bulk purchasing power. Or offsets or renewable energy credits. You don't always have to go through the utility. If the utilities price isn't great. You go to one of these um, bulk sellers of those and there are many to choose from. And uh, and you get high quality ones that in bulk may be cheaper. And Bonneville Environmental Foundation is credible. So is Climate Trust. Uh, you know, there's other ones, three degrees native energy. But Bonneville uh, tends to have the best prices and they're highly credible and they created a lot of the carbon markets. So we like to use them a lot. I don't recommend them outright because you need to shop everywhere to get your prices. But I, they're reliable. Um, for us, they, they tend to be on the better side of pricing. And they're very high quality credits, meaning that you, you can prove they happened.
Well, uh, I thought I had, uh, it would have been nice to have our CFO, Rick, Rick Gregor. Uh, on, on this call and I'm thinking about uh. Folding these ideas and, and concepts into uh, the budget that we will um, be developing. In, in the next year for the um, two year budget that starts July 1st of uh, 2023. But uh, it, it's great to have, uh, I mean, this is, this is exciting and, and getting from. Getting from theory to uh, what we can uh, do on the ground. So, I don't know. Uh, I'm looking forward to that.
Mr. Malone, I'd just like to interject that this same or similar presentation. Will be provided to our leadership team, which consists of all of our department directors. And that will be at a meeting either in uh, early June or at the latest early July.
Great.
And like Rick Gregor is present. I'm not sure whether he's engaged. But he's on the list of people that is on the call. Um, and um. And Paul um, Walsinger is obviously with us and I'm assuming Sean and Jen, that Paul's been engaged and involved in all of this discussion. And, and presentation of alternatives. Hello, Rick. So um, I'm, I'm excited about the uh, adopting this um, climate action plan. Um, when we're ready to do that, but Paul or Rick, any comments?
So thank you commissioners. And again, yeah, I have been listening and very excited about the, what I'm hearing here in relation to the opportunities. I think, you know, and I know Sean and I have met already to talk about strategy as particularly as we start to move into. The budget process, part of what you've, you've heard me talk about before is, is really trying to set up a budget development process. And enables you to really look at from a prioritization standpoint, what are the most important things? And so having this type of work already done. And a lot of numbers gives you the opportunity to really be able to listen and put this in the context of all of your priorities as you move forward into 23, 25. So I, I know at least with the structure I'm working on, uh, I'm going to be working very closely with Sean, particularly as it relates to strategic planning. And how we fold that together. Uh, but again, this is, this is a lot of good work right here that you're hearing. And I think you have a, a good, a good framework already for policy decisions that you can make into 23, 25. Obviously there will be resources you have to commit, but uh, clearly, you know, the benefit is there. So uh, definitely. Um, looking forward to that process and we'll be working closely with Paul and Sean and everyone as we move forward with this.
Great. Any other questions for Josh or comments? So, yeah.
May I have one last word?
Yes, you may.
Just pay attention to that shift of fuel budget to facilities, right? That's a, that's a delicate thing and it's important and you will save money over time. It's just the budget's going to shift from one place to another or meter it a certain way and make sure it goes back to uh, fleet. That's just the one thing I'd say, because I've heard that that's caused some friction in some places where it kind of, all of a sudden, one person's budget. Was blown out and they didn't even really have say in it. So that's for you, Paul.
Thank you, Josh. I really appreciate that. That's a, uh, and it's a key point that we're already looking very closely at. So how we're going to um, set up these stations, how we're going to meter them, monitor them and how. You know, because we, you know, as you well know, one fast charging station draws over 80 amps in use. And that, that's a massive uh, energy draw on a building. And you know, Sean's worked long and hard to get his spreadsheets all straightened up and all the numbers right. And we could skew that dramatically uh, very easily if we're not careful.
Um, okay. So our final, um, next steps and recommendations, I'm not going to put the slide back up, but um, is um. At the end of, is that we're asking commissioners to adopt the 2022 climate action plan and that language is. Is in your packet, but also um, as the fleet policy and guidelines comes through the policy oversight committee. And the telework policy um, as well to adopt those coming up to continue to prioritize climate. Um, and push for department climate goals to consider outward facing um, functions and services. And by this, we mean that um, on things like the trash compactors that don't show up on our um. Inventory, but they do reduce emissions from Republic Services trucks driving around. Similarly, in our departments, we have opportunities like community development is um, considering an online plan review. So customers don't have to drive in to meet with a plan reviewer. Um, that would be something again, that wouldn't show up on our inventory, but would make a difference in our community. Um, to also keep considering other policies as they come up, such as green building and sustainable purchasing. Um, to make decisions on the recommendations from um, good company that we've heard on, heard from today deciding what to take on and when. Um, and all at the same time, as we continue to expand our inventory so that we're tracking and mitigating the impact of all of our emissions. So I'm going to stop because we presented a ton of information um, and see if there's additional questions from the commissioners or anybody. Commissioner Ogeron.
Um, I. I have another question, and that is that we are looking at that gap in what we need to achieve to get to our 2030 goal of reducing. Um, our emissions 50% from 2010 levels. When that gap is predicated on our emissions staying where we are now, but we know that that's not likely. Um, because we are discussing new facilities and we are not discussing. Probably won't leave any of the old facilities behind right away, that's for sure. So um, we, we know that we will only have. More of a gap to deal with moving forward. Um, so I guess that's more of an editorial statement than it is a question. Um, and um, I want to, so I'm strongly in support of this and be happy to make a motion from already.
If there aren't any uh, further questions or, or comments, I, I, I just uh, really appreciate this uh, presentation and getting. Uh, getting into specifics, uh, the. A lot of the climate discussions are, are on a very high level and, and uh. It's wonderful to get, get down to practical, what, what we can do. And, and I, I think uh, Ben County uh, should continue to be leaders in this. Uh, in this effort and uh, so if there aren't any other questions or comments, I'm uh, ready for a motion.
Okay, I moved that the board of commissioners formally adopt that county's updated climate action plan. Thank you, team.
All right, and I will gladly second that. Um, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you for the presentation and it's nice to put a face to the good company and uh.
One of the faces, maybe not the, the most attractive, but one of them.
Uh, you, you'll have to do, Josh.
That's what I tell my wife, I'll have to do.
No, this was, uh, this is inspiring and looking forward to um, putting uh, the recommendations into action. So um, thank you and.
Congratulations. Thank, thank you for the opportunity to do the work for you. I'm glad you're moving. It's really exciting to see.
All right, but uh, thank you. All right, next up, Department uh, reports. Uh, 8.1 discussion and decision to submit board recommendations to uh, projects for a business Oregon for funding. And presto, uh, that's uh, that's yours, Lynn.
Morning commissioners, uh, as a result of expensive lobbying by the Oregon Bears Association. Uh, the state legislature earmarked $10 million for fairgrounds.
uh, the state legislature earmarked ten million dollars for fairgrounds, uh, which is excellent. Uh, what they've decided to do is, uh, they will divide the funding equally between all the fairgrounds. So there'll be thirty-six county fairgrounds. Therefore, each county will receive two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, it has been administered through Business Oregon. Uh, so we will have to do our paperwork through them. It is actually due June third, which is why I wanted to make sure to, uh, meet with you now. Uh, so the funding does have, of course, stipulations and, um, so let me, and let, read this here as to what it's required. Uh, the project must be used for direct capital improvement project costs. Uh, the improvements must provide the useful life of the asset for minimum of twenty years and the ability to fully finish the construction within thirty-six months. And so this is focused on capital improvement projects. I did check, we can't use it on equipment or other types of items. We cannot use it on planning or feasibility studies or anything like that. This is strictly the, um, the construction or remodeling, uh, replacement and renovation of structures. So, uh, the members of the Benton County Fairgrounds, uh, Facilities Committee, uh, the Fair Board does have a subcommittee, the Facilities Committee, they met to review various projects around the fairgrounds that met that criteria. And they came up with their recommendations that went to the Fair Board. Uh, the Fair Board then, uh, looked at those recommendations and made, uh, their selections, their recommendations to you, the commissioners, as to where they think the money should go. Um, if I can be made presenter, I will show you our master plan, uh, preferred layout that shows you what, perfect, thank you. So, there you go. So this is the, uh, preferred layout of the, uh, the master plan that we, we completed before COVID hit. Uh, so if you see on the preferred layout number nine, which is up next to the maintenance shop, that is the proposed new storage building, uh, that we would, uh, that we had planned to build. And if you look down, number eight is what we're calling the Benton Barn. That's that small barn-like building between the auditorium and the arena. So the master plan calls for building this new storage building over next to the maintenance shop so that we can shift all the equipment and materials that are being currently stored in the Benton Barn, move them to an actual storage, appropriate storage building, and then upgrade the Benton Barn to be rentable. Uh, because a lot of people do ask about renting it, it's a cute little barn building. Uh, but obviously, it's full of tables and chairs and fair equipment, so we can't do that now. Uh, but we would like to make it rentable. And particularly, people are interested in its synergy with the, the floor courtyard for weddings to be here and then have this lawn and the Benton Barn is, as like a reception area. They can open the big white doors and have this. And we also have sororities who went barn dances and things like that. So we do have an interest in that building as a rental building. Uh, so the Fair Board has, I'll stop sharing my screen. So the Fair Board has, uh, sent recommendation, Board of Commissioners, that they would like to apply one hundred and seventy-seven thousand of the funding to building the storage building and, um, or at least something in that area, we've priced it out. Uh, so we think we're gonna be in the zone to be able to build the storage building for that amount. And then the balance of the hundred thousand would be used to upgrade the, um, Benton Barn to make it rentable. So they see that those two projects as being, uh, the best use and the most appropriate use of that funding.
A question about the Benton Barn, um, is that a, currently a wood floor building?
No, no, there's the concrete floor in it. So we plan to paint the concrete floor and make it look better, it's, yeah.
Okay, I was thinking, um, you, you mentioned dancing and concrete floors are hideous for any kind of, um, use for dancing. So, uh, it, the addition of a wood floor overlay would be really, really, really lovely and might make that space even more rentable, because there are not very many places, uh, for community dances. Um, West Hills Church is the most frequently used facility for that.
That's a good idea, because right now, you know, they'll use Gerber Hall, but yeah, again, it's, it's also the concrete floor. So, yeah, and like I said, that's hard on your knees and your back. So yeah, it's definitely something we can look at, because that would certainly aesthetically work with that building. Uh, you know, to keep that barn kind of feel that we want, uh, to be able to provide for them. And we know part of that, uh, construction will be a new roof. We certainly know we need a new roof on the Benton Barn. And, uh, so, um, so those are the two options that we, uh, the two items that we had on the list. Yes, Commissioner Malone?
Yeah, uh, there's been, uh, some discussion about, uh, an HVAC system on, uh, Gerber Hall. And, uh, uh, I, I thought there was some, uh, maybe a partial funding, uh, out of the, uh, out of these dollars uh, to, uh, get that project started. Is that still, still on, still the plan or?
Um, well, the, the vote from the Fair Board was to, um, to pay for the storage building and the upgrades to the barn. And if there was any additional money left, it could go towards the HVAC system in Gerber Hall, which we priced about forty thousand. Um, so, but the Fair Foundation also showed their interest in supporting the, the HVAC, um, project with their funding. So I think if, I suspect I won't have much left of that two hundred and seventy-seven thousand after we do the storage building in the Benton Barn. Um, but I certainly can, um, you know, if the commissioners would like us to hold maybe ten or twenty thousand of that aside to match a Fair Foundation, uh, contribution to the HVAC system, we can certainly do that.
Because it, it was my understanding that the current HVAC is on its last legs, is that accurate?
I have disagreement among my staff on that. I have some staff that say yes and some staff that say no, it just, it just needs a few extra parts. So, uh, I think we need to dig in a little bit more into, um, really what the status is of the Gerber Hall. HVAC system, is it truly on its last legs or can we get it through another five years or so?
Okay. Uh, that, that would be nice to know, to, uh, kind of, uh, set priorities here.
Yes.
All right, uh, any other, any other questions?
I would be happy to make a motion. Um, and however, this motion stipulates that the entirety of the funds would go to constructing a new storage building. And I think that what we have just discussed is that we'd like to prioritize the new storage building first and then the build out of the Benton Barn.
Yes, I, yeah, I apologize for that. I, um, when I got my checklist yesterday, I realized the, that it hadn't changed. Because I originally had both of the projects and any remaining going to Gerber Hall HVAC on mine. So at some point it got changed, and I'm not sure.
I will adapt it.
Thank you.
I'm, I moved to apply the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, uh, in Business Oregon funding to constructing, uh, a new storage building, um, to, uh, upgrading the Benton Barn, uh, as a rental facility and to apply any remaining funds to HVAC upgrades for Gerber Hall.
Great, I, I will second that. All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Right?
Perfect, yeah. That's exactly the Fair Boards, and, uh, and it is a reimbursable, uh, funding. So we will be taking the money out of the TLT accounts and then reimbursing it back into that. So I talked to, um, Rick Gregor about that.
Okay.
Right, well, thank you so much.
More, more progress on the fairgrounds.
Yay, more money, we'll take it, we'll use it. Thank you.
Thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item number nine, other, do we have any, any other, Joe?
Commissioner Malone, thank you. I'd like to revisit our public comments section of the meeting, uh, and just acknowledge that the board received, uh, email late yesterday afternoon. Uh, the email was from Kristen Jokums, representing the National Federation of the Blind, Lynn Benton Chapter. And the nature of her email was outlining concerns regarding our paratransit services offered by our Benton area transit program. I would ask that the, uh, recorder enter this email into the record, uh, under public comment. Uh, we were anticipating that, uh, Ms. Jokums would be, uh, participating in public comment this morning and sharing that letter herself, uh, but in her absence, I feel compelled to make sure that we do, uh, recognize the, uh, email uh, as public comment, uh, that was submitted yesterday late afternoon.
Great, uh, thank you for catching that. I, uh, read it over, but, uh, it, it was, uh, a separate email and not in the packet, so. Thank you for catching that, Joe. And I see, um, Vance is here, do we, uh, are you gonna say something other, under other? Or, uh, gonna talk about the, uh, executive session that we're not gonna have?
I, I was just here looking over Joe's shoulder for this last one.
Okay.
We should just sit in the same office, Vance.
Just, just knock on the wall if you, if you wanna get his attention, Joe.
Works good.
All right, uh, anything else, uh, for the good of the order? Hearing none, uh, meeting is adjourned. I don't have a hammer, but, uh, that'll have to do. Uh, thank you all.